Mary Spillman.
We've got the nine o'clock, undersheriff Cashman wants to move his detention position over to dispatch and make it official because I guess we've got needs in both areas and we authorize, we authorize the detention one, but now he wants it to be authorized in a dispatch one instead of a detention one? I assume, did I say that right?
I think so.
Is that your understanding, Madam Secretary?
Yes, move the position to dispatch.
And he was going to be here, but he's sick today?
He's, I know that he's sick, I don't know how he feels so much.
Do you, do we have any applicants for detention or dispatch?
We don't have, no, we don't.
From all the people who are not sitting there for the last six months?
We had one, I had Wayne come in and ripped out of.
Have we, have we gotten other interests other than that one?
No.
So if we move this over, I thought that possibly there was one that was interested. Isn't that what's driving this transition here?
I'm not really sure what's driving. He said, he told us that something might happen to one employee, might do this, if this happens, and those were his explanations. So I don't know if he's expecting someone's way to leave dispatch. So they need to put somebody in there. He talked about having an applicant four months ago. They chose not to hire, they talked about, oh, we'll call him and bring him in.
So did we have any success reaching on the phone to see if this is still the intended? They want the authorized detention position that we were agreeing to open up to now being moved over to dispatch because I guess they're anticipating a departure. And we talked about last week, but we didn't have it on the agenda as applicants. For lack of any new information, I guess that's why it's on here.
We just have it at open position either one. We get detention applicants, we can hire detention. If we had dispatch applicants, we can hire dispatch, I don't know.
I did check with Mako on it and because we, it's not dictated by statute, but because we, he came as an action item for the detention position, she felt that yes, we need to make it an action item to move it to a different position.
Can we make it an either or position?
She didn't suggest that.
Huh?
She didn't suggest that.
I just think it should be an either or.
If it's a position, yeah, in detention slash dispatch.
I mean, if we got somebody coming in as, with an interest in detention.
I'm just telling you what Mako said, I'm just reporting.
Well.
Yeah.
Well, I guess if that happened, we can always have it on the agenda again, yeah. So if people don't get upset about, I'll just, I'll move the, you know, because they're not here. So I'm assuming this is what they actually want to done. I'll move that we have the open to the position in detention be transitioned over to become an open position in dispatch.
All second to that.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's done. Okay, so now we have nine forty-five. So Mary, y'all, Furlong knows the nine forty-five Jill's six-month review and possible action item with Mary Yarn.
So Jill's completed her six months. I still feel that she's very capable employee. She's met my expectations in this last probation period. She's punctual, detail oriented, and picks up tasks easily. She's been taking on more responsibility for the motor vehicle and taking some of that load off of Claudia. She jumps in and helps in anything that needs to be done. She continues to be an asset for the office. When the budget was written last year, they did put her down as thirteen dollars an hour. She's currently making eleven dollars an hour. So I'd like to increase it up to the thirteen, which is a budget, but I know our office is a central office. We were able to keep it open, I think, all of just maybe two days this last, last year at that, I think. So I just think she's a valuable employee and would like to re-order for her time.
Okay, so is this, and when did she start again, Mary?
It's been, I think, last week was six months.
Okay.
October. Because there was that little bit of time in between where she was off and then hired her back again for full time. So it was actually April sixth, twenty twenty, when I sat here.
Oh.
Last time when she was at six months.
Okay.
Well, I think we're close, close to budget time. And if we give her one now, then we'll have to give her another one on budget time. I think we can just wait till budget time and then you can ask for a ban or whatever. I think we're trying to move away from the six-month reviews anyway. I think we're looking at going to a year probation. Because that's what the sheriff's office does and to be consistent throughout.
Very good.
Well, we're looking at going to a year probation instead of six months, so. Anyway, I just think we're close to budget time and.
Although, did we make the change yet in our policy? Or is it still?
No, that's what we need to do. That's one of our policy changes for the year.
Uh, Mary, remind me, if Jill had not left when she did, what, what raise would she have gotten last, last July?
Well, it was written in the budget for up to thirteen.
No, I don't mean that, I mean what?
So I don't, I'm not quite sure.
There was a, there were the raises that we gave the employees.
Fifty-four, I believe, wasn't it, or fifty-two? But she, no, she did not get that, that time because she was gone right, right then.
I'm just trying to take that into consideration. You remember what it went on, the employees got left?
I'm sorry, I don't.
And she started after the budget thing? I don't remember.
Yeah, it was.
Okay.
First, first week in October?
Yeah, I wouldn't go for the, whatever she did.
Yeah.
Their employees got.
I'm thinking, I'm just kind of thinking, since we haven't officially changed it in the policy yet, that might be a little unfair to have that be the first person when it's not written. And since I'm thinking, I don't know, I'm okay with granting a six-month probationary raise of fifty cents, which historically, that's what they used to be, I think, fifty cents.
Yeah.
And then we'll have budget to revisit anything different than that.
Okay.
But that's what I propose in the form of motion, is grant her a fifty cent, six-month probationary increase and then revisit it in a month and a half or whatever we're doing in July for budgets.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Yeah, I would too.
Okay. Any, is that a second, Mr. Simon?
Yes, I would second.
So we have a first and now a second. Is there any further discussion or questions? Mary, do you think further?
No, no.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
All right. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, maybe one thing, I guess we're granting it today, right? I don't know, with payroll. With payroll and all that for confusion of things that are lacking.
Because next, next Friday is payroll, so I think today is the last day of, sort of day on the next, the next cycle.
Okay, okay, so good enough. All right, we're good then. Okay. Thank you very much, and that one is over. The next, uh, the next meeting here is ten o'clock with U.S. Census Bureau update with Lily Grito or Grigo?
Griege.
Griege, all right.
So Lily.
Hi, Mr. Sir. And thank you so much. I really appreciate Dawn helping me and working with me to get me on your agenda, so thank you.
So Lily, we have Commissioner Johnston, Salawi, and Simons. We have a member from the community, Monty Turner, and then we do have Mary Furlong on the video camera.
Wonderful. Well, I just want to say thank you so much. I have a handful of updates that don't take but just a couple of minutes to run through. I'm going to work with Dawn after this, and hopefully staff members who spend the more time working on census updates and things post 2020 census. So my name is Lily Griege, as I mentioned, I kind of tackle if you're old school like I am. You may remember way back when in the commercials that say Lego my ego. So I always say that sort of my name is Griege Ego, Lego my ego.
Okay.
So feel free to call me Lily. And we have a team of folks working on the census during 2020 throughout Montana. Those folks have all finished what we refer to as their tour of cities. So I'm sure contact them for work for the census. And I'm really happy to be working with folks in Colorado, Wyoming, and Montana. We also have a tribal specialist. She is working in Montana and multiple other states. But any tribal questions, I would refer over to my colleagues, who I introduced Lily time after today. So the reason I reached out is to let you know that we are approaching the timeframe where the apportionment data will come out. And when you do a job, you start with whom everybody knows you're talking about. So I know that Montana is anxious to get another seat in Congress. And so when we say apportionment, I met yesterday with a brand new Congress person's staff. And their staffs, we know what apportionment is. And so I wanted to take a moment just to refresh everybody's memories of listening to this and say, apportionment is the way that we count each other country during the census and then divide up seats and representation in Congress based on our population. And so the apportionment counts are slated to come out April thirtieth. And that's when I reached out to Dawn and said, hey, maybe, you know, touch base with the county commissioners. So as soon as that information is released, my goal is to use them as national news. But I'll also email you any information that I have and I'll send that by way of Dawn. Uh, but my guess is you'll all be caring about it because, again, Montana is one of the states slated to receive an extra seat. We don't know that until we see that data. So that's just around the corner. But in the meantime, we've switched gears a little bit away from 2020 census and counting the country over to what are our services that we provide? So we are doing something called Data Summit, international. And I'm going to send Dawn an email after I speak with Dawn today. And it has a link for all kinds of seminars that we have coming up during the next few weeks. International, they fill up quickly. We had high demand for one of them that was related to rural populations. It was actually called assessing census data for rural communities. So they just re-upped the number of attendees, so that's why I'm going to send it right away after the date. Because you can sign in and listen to this and you can get information about how the data we collect. Because as a federal agency, our data is collected by federal employees with a tax bill dollars outwork, which means that this is all free data available to you. You know, a lot of folks, Facebook, you know, work hard to provide data for legislative issues, staffing issues, deciding what you're going to do. I noticed if I look at your website, you have an influx of tourism facing, you know, your environment, like we do here in Colorado. So that's one of those tourism and decisions and policy decisions that you all make in your important work and some could give you data to support your decisions. So we want to share back with you the data that we have at your fingertips that is yours to have. It's collected by taxpayer dollars. So the thing that's important is that you need to fill it really quickly. And the aspect of your staff members or community members and head of revenue. But I'm here to do local presentations because they fill up so quickly. So I can do specialized reporting and things like that for minerals, county, and share it up with your staff. Um, the other thing that I wanted to share, I'm point number three, I think that was big, so I'm just about done, uh, is that we have two surveys going on right now. And your folks in your community may call your offices or may queue in the community and say, hey, I received a weird email from the Census Bureau, or I received a phone call and I, I thought the subject was that. So we did something where COVID is called, there are two of us, point number three and point number four, the small business poll surveys or the household poll surveys. And the reason that we did these two surveys throughout COVID was to track changes in real time for how the country was performing to COVID rate pools. Of how are households doing in terms of economics, in terms of jobs, access to food, access to education, and access to in-season employment? And how are local businesses able to respond to the needs of their communities? And we release this information weekly and it's on our website. So again, all this is in my email that I sent shortly after our time together today. And then the next thing I wanted to let you know is that if you have questions on redistricting, that apportionment census information is coming out in two weeks. We have some which we're doing specifically on what the Census Bureau does with that. But then we refer everybody back to the state of Montana for the actual redistricting that takes place on the ground. So with that said, I'm going to pause for any questions. Oh, and I know the last thing, I'm so sorry. Uh, point number five, that we have an apportionment map that I'm going to include in every email. And this map shows you historic changes from all of our census to 2010. And my educated guess would be that they're going to update it with the 2020 census data instead of we had that at the end of April. So is that a pause for some questions or feedback?
Uh, I guess, so by the end of April, you'll have numbers? You'll know what the population changes are in Montana from 2010?
So the apportionment for 2021, from the apportionment count, it will tell us, yes, for population and what do the, the number of seats look like for Congress? This is the information everybody's really chomping at the bit to get. So I met with some of your colleagues in Lake County last week and they said, you know, I thought you asked me questions. And they said, wow, how's Montana doing? And I said, I wish I knew. Um, so this, this data release that we have coming out at the end of the month is going to be quite helpful in telling us, in our layman's terms, how did Montana do? And so we're anxious to see that. The data that is going to be released in September 2021 is the redistricting data. And that's really going to tell you down to a granular level what you all are looking for in terms of Montana. That will include a lot of your very specific information as it relates to minerals, county. Um, but this first release is going to be informative in terms of the relocation of Colorado.
Okay, so basically, by the end of the month, we might know how Montana fared for the congressional seat. But you will not have real hard numbers for county by county until September?
Correct, absolutely correct.
Okay. Yeah, because there's a couple of, a couple of things that do, new laws and bills that affect counties and what they get paid, pilt, and other things based on population of said county. So we're kind of curious about what our county's doing in numbers wise. So we'll just wait, I guess, till September.
Well, if, you know, we're supposed to have the data in March of 2021. That's traditionally how it works out and with COVID, we experienced these delays. And we are monitoring a lot of, that's why I asked to meet with Dawn is to understand, you know, kind of what are others really waiting on until, we deal with tilt over here in Colorado as well. Um, so I'm quite familiar with that. And so I'm going to share that information back with headquarters and let them know that some of the local legislation is dependent upon this and why you all are waiting for it. So I will just pick and know that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
All right.
Any other questions?
Anybody have questions in the, no?
I think we did just fine on time. I just want to say thank you so much. I'm very grateful for all the work you all do. I know it's hard to sit here every day and work hard. So I will be in touch with your staff going forward and I just want to say thank you and wish you well in the rest of the year and hopefully I'll get to be a personal rep.
Yeah, and I'll remember to do the joke, let go my ego, Miss Griege. Okay, thanks for calling.
Thank you.
Bye. Yeah, ten ten now, and it is ten ten, so the Pioneer Bus Barn, um, county, the county land and the plan map viewing.
Okay, you all remember Lynn Halliburton, look what you did again, uh, in there.
Yes.
Yeah. So that worked for us on the council whenever she wants to kind of twist her arm and go, this is the direction to go. I'm not saying that's what this is about, I'm not saying that at all.
Yeah, it's for us, I'm a cookie man, so we need some more cupcakes.
Oh, is it really?
Yeah, it's just a given.
You have all these volunteers that don't get paid, so at least you can entice them.
And she, that's it.
With a home baked product like that.
Oh, good Lord, yes.
Yeah.
So Lynn is now the president or the chairman.
Chair.
And I'm the co-chair?
Vice chair.
Whatever. I haven't gotten anything right yet. But she's also the workhorse and understands his insight now, so. Uh, I'll turn it over to her to let her share with what, I, I believe you all have a copy of this.
Yeah, the map that our cell phone did for us.
Yep.
Um, so I guess the thing that I'm looking at, knowing the FTA, um, I think it's great that the way they did it, we're only possibly removing two trees is all out of that area. Well, um, they, you know, I was concerned about that.
I didn't even know that was, I thought the fault course.
Well, the fault course, but they also look at the environment. They don't like you taking trees up and all that kind of stuff and replacing it with asphalt, so, um.
And hopefully the trees that, do they, are they savvy to know what trees might be diseased or dying? You wouldn't want some leaves to fall over on your building.
Yeah, we, we would look at that.
Yeah.
Actually, if you look at it, the two trees that are within shaded area. I've seen it, yeah. Um, there's just the one that would be like right in the center of the garage probably. And then the one just on the back corner would be taken out, but.
Yeah.
Um, so all the rest of them seem, although I don't know how tall they are, they seem like they're probably far enough away that that might not be a problem, but.
Yeah, because that's.
Would certainly not, you know.
Because the building is actually the white thing, the rest are just parking asphalt.
Yeah, it's asphalt, you're right, right. And, um, I think we discussed it before that, um, the council is open to letting community groups use the conference room that'll fit in that building.
Oh, great.
Um, some of the people on our council would also like us to consider putting facilities there so they can do their commodities.
Oh, yeah.
Um, however, FTA rigs don't allow us to use transit money to build facilities for some other purpose other than transit. Um, so, I mean, if they want to do a fundraiser, we might come back and consider that. But at this point, federal rigs just won't allow us to do that. All they actually allow us to do is if our vehicles aren't in use, they can use them to deliver meals, as long as we're not denying bribes. But thinking about it, if the commodities program wanted to do expand to say Meals on Wheels, to me, it would make more sense for them to partner with the senior centers where they've got the commercial companies now can do all of that work rather than a transit facility where we have a break room. So, but, you know, if they can use a conference room to disperse the commodities, that's fine. It's just we can't build facilities specific for that purpose for them, unfortunately.
At this point, we have a place of restoring all the food for the commodities up there at the same reuse community center. And that was through, uh, one of those, I think it was, uh, Headwaters, five thousand dollar coriant, I think.
Yeah, that Patty Curtain back.
Yeah. It's all, I mean, it's all taken care of there. We've got a little climate control, so, and horseshoes and trees or something like that. But it's got a whole, and, you know, I'll just say this, I, I like it up there because that's where everybody, all the volunteers have come for years and it works darn well. But that's, and we'll carry on our.
I just wanted to inform them in case you got a complaint, that you would have a reason why we can't do that.
FTA.
Yeah, federal regulations don't allow it.
Primarily because of food mixing with gasoline exhaust, et cetera? Trying to baron food or, or some other, so in other words, if there wasn't a food drop off, if somebody else had another request that didn't involve, that's the only thing I'm sitting here thinking of is they don't want to have food mixed with gas and oil, but.
Well, there's that. You certainly wouldn't want to store your commodities in your garages where the vehicles are being stored. Um, I think it's more of.
Intention of the money?
Yeah, and call it Turf Four.
All right, Stavian?
Turf Four, where the commodities money comes out of help and human services, this comes out of the DOT. So it's just kind of, they want that clear line. There's been several entities in the state that have coven built their health and human service money with their transit money and they're always very cautious of that. And using one, let's say, help and human service money to support a transit program or vice versa. So it's just, um, I know one agency in the state that actually did build a facility. They used the driver break room, um, to store their commodities. They used one of the garage facilities to build a commercial kitchen. And that agency ended up paying the MTA back a hundred thousand dollars. Yeah, so I don't want to put us in a position.
And is that ruled like ever sunset or after 20 years? Then do they say, okay, the building's kind of considered yours now, we don't care what you use for?
Actually, the sunset on that is 40 years.
Okay.
On, on the buildings that FTA builds. Um, but that's not to say that if, you know, every, the community really wanted us to do this, we could probably try and do a fundraiser, see if we could raise enough money to build something through fundraiser dollars. And just since the contractor's on site and stuff, that would save money. That way, we just have to make sure we've got that clear firewall so we can prove that we did not use transit money to build, build another purpose.
So you were talking about Meals on Wheels being separate from the senior centers?
No, 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 I said to me, that makes more sense to have them associated with the senior centers because they actually cook the meals and all of that stuff. We won't have a commercial kitchen in this facility. We'll have a break room, private, a small refrigerator and a microwave.
All right, I just.
So.
But even like the food pantry where they get dried goods that can't be distributed where people come and get their stuff from the food pantry at this location?
Well, again, if they could, say there's a group of people that need the meals up or their commodities up in Superior, I don't think it would present a problem if we let them, store them. I don't think it would present a problem if we let them store them until the people came got in the conference room where that really isn't disrupting any transit activities. But they couldn't store them there for months and months and months. I mean, it would be, you know...
Right, right.
A few days.
It's kind of who's a drop off spot, it might be okay.
Right.
Good.
So, I guess at this point, you ask for the site map before you approve the donation of the property. Doesn't look like we need the whole thing. So, I don't know how you want to do that. I did ship this map to Andy, so he's got a copy of it as well.
How much property will we ask?
I cannot tell you that.
Okay.
My eyes are not that good.
No, mine aren't either. How much property is there? That chunk of property over there on the side of the house there? Do you think...
Well, this...
Isn't this it here?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's about eight hundred acres?
No, I think it's four, isn't it?
I thought, yeah.
And the road kind of goes right there.
There, yep.
So... If this is the end of the property, then we're just taking a little bit of this.
A little bite out here.
Yeah, so they would, if, I think you said the economic development wanted to use housing or something.
Be talking about, yeah, rural housing, as they haven't already.
Although this is way thinner than it looks on the map.
I thought it was.
Yeah.
But I...
Wow.
Yeah.
I'm trying to remember. I thought we had, don't we have a little bit of land that goes west of the building site? Or where's that original map? I thought we had more than east. We had a little more land and just four acres. I thought there was like ten, but...
Yeah, I can't remember. And parcel B might go to where, you know, the dotted line's in? Because I think it is even with McKinley.
Some of it's on the side of the road too, yeah.
Yeah, so I think it actually this part over a little bit to the left of the building.
Right.
And I'm not sure why they didn't use that if it was the grade or having to take out more trees or...
Little gray docks or trees?
Yes.
Okay. Sign over. Part of consideration.
Yeah. Now, you'd be surprised what FTA considers. Nothing's easy anymore.
Some anthills over there. I wonder if they're aware of that.
They're probably endangering species.
Yeah, I'm kidding.
All right, well, good.
See, I'd only, and I don't think it's possible. I think they probably did the best they could if you had the entrance coming straight off of McKinley. Because I know at one point you guys have talked about...
Right.
Vacating Moats Lane, but... And I can certainly call Toby back, the gentleman I work with on this, and see if that's a possibility. If that's a problem.
And so, you think that the main reason, you know, the driveway kind of arcs out...
Yeah.
To the east there. And then we're just too problematic to have this go straight out to the road? I mean, because what it would do is make, allow more space if...
Yeah.
For another structure building, whatever the driveway was in. I don't know if it's a rise and fall of the terrain there or the tree. But it would be handier if it was just straight in. And then it would be, it would be not taking up as much real estate, so to speak.
Okay, let me get ahold of him and get back with you on that. Any other concerns? And we could probably get rid of those three parking spots that he's got up there at the top, which would give you more land to the right of it.
I'm just thinking if they could make it more, you know, symmetrical, you know? If they got kind of a rectangle thing going, don't start...
Getting free.
Wilding it out, yeah. Because you have all, you have all kinds of rooms still north for parking, north and a little bit east and west.
Okay.
And the driveway. I'm just trying to, if we really do only have four point six acres and there's somebody who has another prospective idea countywide, you'd hate to go, wow, we need to put a building there, but there's a big old driveway going there, you know?
Yeah, and that's not to say that it couldn't be shared use driveway. So, it limits that, limits the access on the road. But...
Good point.
Well, we'll see what he comes up with.
Yeah.
What his reasons were for doing it the way that he did.
Yeah.
Looks like trees to me, that's...
Yeah, I think, you know, he wanted to keep it aesthetically pleasing.
Yeah, probably not.
Without clear cutting a lot.
Yeah. Let's make stumps. Oh, I didn't say that.
Yeah.
That's like salivating.
Yeah, reclaim the wood, make great window frames and stuff.
Yeah.
You might need the trees to cut the lumber to build the thing, the price of lumber.
Yeah, yeah, I know. That's one thing. It's just like, I wonder if that's gonna do to it.
Yeah, because it's like eleven hundred dollars and four thousand now on the market in the market recorder.
Eleven hundred?
One thousand eighty something.
About two hundred dollars a square foot to build anything right now.
About a year ago, it was three fifty, three sixty, and now it's over a thousand.
They figured twenty to twenty-four thousand on an average house increase.
Where's the nine hole?
Yeah. All right, well, thanks for your work on that.
Oh, you're welcome.
Making something look a little bit more tangible to us.
Yeah. So, the excavation starts Monday at eight. You guys want to be out there for the...
Thanks.
With our shovels and...
Yeah, that's right. I'll bring my chainsaw.
So, I guess the question I have, because I know MDT's gonna be asking it, are we still basically looking at you guys willing to donate a portion of parcel B?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, good.
No.
Okay. Thanks.
That's been sitting there a long time. And it's an unusual shape, and you guys are up in the county and you're doing legwork. You'd like to...
Hopefully, there'll be some short term jobs anyway.
Yeah, and we're getting another van, probable, another mini van down the road.
Yeah.
Eyes roll, maybe not.
Well, yeah, there's two problems. One, you've got the microchips that they can't get.
That's right.
So, building vehicles is really...
And everything is inserts.
Yeah, and then...
The sex deodorant, that part?
No, actually, they, we got one there flipping us to hybrids now. So, they're gas electric. And, yeah, four cylinder engine. So, she's like, Elizabeth drove it back from Helen. She said it had good zip to it. So, that was good to hear. I figured, you know, if you want to...
We've lightened our carbon footprint already.
Well, not really. When you take into account the batteries from the...
Yeah, yeah. All the mining for the bat... And then plus, you have to have electricity to recharge them, so...
Right.
Yeah, and you get it away from the coal mine, so...
Yeah.
This is gonna end well, I couldn't tell. The other issue is the gentleman that used to do the procurements for us. He was promoted, so he's, I don't think he's doing them anymore, but he may fill that position, Adam.
Oh. Okay.
So, he's reached the Dilbert principle.
Okay, oh, God, okay. We just hear about all the things that go on.
So, I suspect we're gonna be looking at what we were a few years ago, where it takes probably three years from the time they award the vehicle until you actually see well.
Okay.
But whatever, we'll keep setting on.
Yep.
So, what's our next step? What are we doing now?
Well, I'm gonna go call Toby and ask him these questions.
Okay.
And then I'll shoot you an email that you can forward on to them.
I'll send it to Dawn.
Okay.
Toby, the...
Yeah, and then if we need to come back and discuss anything, we're happy to do that.
Okay. Good.
Okay.
Good deal.
So, good job.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming out. All right.
Before you hit the... Maybe you hit the gavel.
They don't want to see us stuff in our face.
Oh, that's true.
Okay, I guess we're done. During, thank you guys. On the agenda here, clothing allowance, action item, maintenance director, Norm.
Receipt for my, for my eyeglass, my safety glasses?
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Turn that off.
Probably, the last time I bought was ten years ago. They're like four fifty after insurance. They've gone up to six eighty-five. So, my crap. But a lot of the things like side shields on regular glasses, OSHA approved, insurance not. A lot of insurance companies don't care for you for higher insurance with having just the side shields. So, I think there's some good ones and buy ones, cry ones.
And so, you're proposing to be like the county road department, their clothing allowance? Or you're wanting, or you're asking that, what's your, what's your tab there?
My side of things is six eighty-five after insurance paid. I gotta talk to the insurance company about that. The paperwork they gave me is a little weird, so I'm not sure if they'll let me totally. They're doing reimbursement thing. I'm not entirely sure. But they said at the eyeglass place that, yeah, insurance paid the three fifty already. It doesn't make any sense to me why.
So, would this be a clothing allowance? Wouldn't it just be a reimbursement for safety glasses?
I guess so, yeah.
Whichever one works best for the county, you know? I need them for like, you know, for whacking.
Right, yeah. No, I think it would just be a reimbursement for safety glasses instead of a clothing allowance type. I mean, it's not like your, I mean, because like your safety coats, vests and stuff, it's, we just pay for it because it's something that you need.
It's not frequent enough.
Right, yeah. So, I would just think that this would just be a reimbursement for...
For OSHA approved glasses.
Glasses, so...
So, who's I will, I don't know, do I wear something I'm doing out here? Do this up to you guys.
Okay, so, so then you're hoping that we'll, we'll pay the six hundred and eighty-five dollar difference for your...
I don't expect you to pay all of it or anything like that. It's just, you guys, how you guys...
Well, it's something that I think is the safety thing that you need.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we approve the difference. The difference between what the insurance pays and what you offer for safety glasses.
I see.
Okay, yeah. And so, just to be clear, these are safety glasses slash prescription eyewear that you need when you...
Yeah.
So, people in Zoom land there aren't looking at you buying a pair of plastic safety glasses. These are...
No, no.
These are, these are regular eyewear for your eyes and dual purpose. And they are OSHA approved, safety glasses for grinders, weed whackers, whatever you're doing for the county maintenance building. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. And hopefully that's clear, clear to everybody what this is about. So, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, so, yeah, well, these will claim things, Norm just up...
Fill a claim out.
Yeah, and then... And then we'll, and before you, before case we process, it'll have to be approved by one of us. So, after you fill it out and staple that to it, then one of us will sign it. And then you can turn it into a repayment.
Okay, all right. All right, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, good bet. Okay, so...
It's on.
Maybe we'll pass. We're gonna get in trouble for having updates when you're not pulled on the agenda with that subject matter.
Sure enough.
But thanks for the offer, Norm. I'll catch you in the hall or something.
All right.
All the comments.
Just had a couple of questions on how things went this morning. Couldn't make it, I was tied up on the phone with... You know, really planning to improve the park, St. Regis Park.
I'll just say so, yeah, their intention too.
I'll let you get out there.
Okay, Mr. Kepi is here with a question about how to put improvements for the fixing...
I'll give you an update, and then I've got a couple of other questions. Between the Resort District and Park Committee and the Forest Service and support from the Community Council, you know, all working together. I've mentioned we're gonna do some expansion of the park onto the Forest Service side. We're gonna improve parking on the county land that's still available there. Back behind the concession stand, kind of sort of back in there. Improve some parking there. We're gonna put another vault toilet in the back, the second loop, the back loop, where we're gonna have more parking. And then there'll probably be a vault toilet over at the trailhead for Rowdy Olympian on the Forest Service side. And parking for a hundred cars.
Are the, are the vault toilets that you're thinking of gonna be outside the St. Regis Sewer District in the, on the Forest Service side of things or inside the sewer district?
Okay.
Okay, okay.
Far as I know.
Okay.
I'll review that.
Just want, because they have that sewer district basically right on the Mineral County line with the, you know...
Right.
That's how Mr. Young was able to put a rented toilet. Because that toilet that's in the park tied to the sewer in the winter time gets vandalized or water freezes.
Yeah, we have winter, right.
So, that's closed, yeah, that's closed. So, then the porta potty is there to facilitate the needs of people when that's closed. And it doesn't need to be in the St. Regis Sewer District because it is placed outside the boundary line on the Forest Service portion. So, vaulted toilets, I'm just anticipating that if there's vaulted toilets going in and they're on the park side, which is in the sewer district side, there could be an issue, so...
No, they have Forest Service.
Yeah, it's back, back behind.
Okay. Just want to clarify so you don't...
Towards the heli, towards the heli port.
Find that out later when somebody comes in.
When they extended the sewer to the concession stand, they put the lift station. It's actually on National Forest.
Okay.
That's why we have to get the permit.
And so, that was added to the special use permit later on.
Oh, okay.
I think by Mike Cole, when he was here. So, it kind of slipped in there and then was added to the permit, right?
And I, you know, who made the Forest Service more, Lynn? Can we, it'd be nice if we could talk to somebody into doing like a little permanent permit or permanent easement or whatever they want to call it. Because that land basically is the park and having to...
Yeah. I think it's a long term, I think it's a ten year, it's a ten year. And they might not want to go permanent because if something radical happens with a windstorm, a fire, some other, you know, disaster or who knows what might happen. They'd have to revamp things anyway, so, I don't know. But anyways, we're making progress on designing with Mark Bellin and his group, designing better access parking amenities to help the park and the Rowdy Olympian. Okay, so this in the background.
And that, those vault toilets will just be accepted? Or what, they gotta be pumped?
Yeah, they gotta be pumped, yeah.
They won't be porta potties?
Like the one at Logie Trail.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And we negotiate on who takes care of that, you know? Forest Service helps or... Yeah, we have to figure all that out.
Yeah.
Okay, then the questions I have is what was the results of that census review updated today?
It was actually kind of vague. Basically said that numbers won't actually be known for the state of Montana until the end of April. And they're, and they're basically trying to expedite it to get known, our congressional proportion if Montana gets another seat in the House. And specifically county, Montana county numbers won't be known or tallied until September.
Oh, okay.
So, we kind of just told them that we were more keenly interested in that because there are some things like pilt and other things that are being based on the size of the population of the town.
Right, and we've got to be having an increase by the way. Now, part of that increase is people that don't want to be counted, so, yeah.
So, it was kind of probably just more of a friendly touch base thing. I think the gal said she was out of Colorado, is that where she was from?
Yeah, I think your Denver regional office for that, yeah. Because last year or the year before, I got a call from there about maybe having a community center available for training the census people. But that never happened.
Oh, it didn't?
I think because of COVID, I don't know how many, they did more virtual training.
Yeah. Normally, you know, numbers would all be known by the end of March. The twenty twenty numbers would be known by March twenty-one, but because of the COVID, it slowed everything down. That's why the delay, we won't know Mineral County's number until September.
Okay, then another topic was the Pioneer Council looking for a bus barn.
Yeah, you can...
You got a hat correct?
Yeah, you can take these with you.
I'm curious, um...
It was like four point acres of county land, this is Moats Lane. And they, they have a design for a building here. It looks like it's about eighty by seventy.
Oh, just east of the hospital?
Correct.
Oh.
Yeah.
Was that the same piece that the search and rescue thought they were gonna do something on?
Correct, once upon a time, yeah.
Did they take that old storage container off there? Did they take that old storage container up there, did they?
Anyway, the last time I went by there, 'cause I was thinking about maybe getting it from, you know, see if they wanted to donate it to us for extra storage, but it was gone, so I think they would get out to their.
Nice.
Properties, so.
So would they be getting grant funding or some kind of?
Yeah, there's a, a lady from Missoula that helps uh do them in other locations in the county, she's kind of spearheading it, uh, oh, her name escapes me.
I've been to quite a few, I've been to quite a few of their monthly meetings.
She works with Monty Turner, Monty Turner's kind of vice chair, co-chair for up, up here.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so they, they got a, a windfall probably from the Corona money too, and so it's a Department of Transportation grant that's gonna build the barn, and they're gonna have like a little office area on the wing of it. So, and they said they're open for, should it need to be a drop-off point for food pantry or whatever, there won't be any cooking allowed in it because the transportation won't allow that with their grant money, but.
There'll be some meeting space.
Right. And they're getting an extra van or bus or something.
Right, yeah, well, once it gets all done, they might be able to enter them into the memorandum with um, the hospital about, you know, satellite facilities in case of emergencies. Things like that, backup, like emergency overnight housing or, I don't know, but, okay. Well, it's mainly what I was interested in today.
Hey.
What else is going on?
I don't know. Anything exciting coming up?
Is this been staked out yet, or marked on the ground?
Uh, you know, I don't know, I don't think so, because it's, 'cause we suggested maybe a driveway change, just to kind of keep some of that land to the east more available through another prospect for it. So they were gonna have to guide each other, and I don't know if the driveway word is because of, you know, grade or terrain or the trees, but. So those trees are the, the round shaded area of trees, and maybe trying to make it, keep it aesthetically nice with trees in it.
Does anybody ever use that vault course out there, Christie Golf Course?
Uh, I don't think, I, I don't know.
One of the baskets, or goals, or whatever they call it, it's got a little, little ponderosa pine tree growing up through it.
It hasn't had any use for a while.
Isn't that when Cardy was here or something?
Yeah.
Is that part of the challenge, is to get through those branches? Get extra points for that?
Yeah.
Well, there is kind of a, a walking trail out there, right?
I, I've never explored it.
There's a little walking trail that they take folks that need a little bit of physical, a little physical therapy, gentle walking, yeah, there's, there's a little bend up there.
Well, how about, how are things your way, are that construction giving you a headache, or is it not too bad?
No, it's moving, that barn's going up in a hurry.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they've been moving a lot of material in for the new manginmooze, bringing that craze up.
Yeah, I don't think, if, if Marlo's gets flooded up, we're all in trouble.
I think she went a little overboard, a little bit.
She jacked that building up about.
Oh, alright.
Four feet above everybody else.
Yeah, it's on a mound.
And then it's a big building anyway.
Yeah, it's like a barn. It's like a three-story building on a, on a mound. Yeah, gonna be different. I'm wondering how much she's gonna do for drainage on that property? Because y- your drainage can't go on your neighbor's property, you gotta contain it on your property.
Well, there is those storm drains back there along that street, kind of, when they were.
I didn't look into that, you know, at the community center, we had one since we did, we gotta put sumps in three quarters, so the water wouldn't run off of our property. And the way she's built it up like that, I wonder if she knows about that, or.
Probably not.
Does Travis build any?
No.
What, who's building it?
I don't remember that guy's.
Oh.
Somebody said he was from Idaho.
Quite a crew with a lot of equipment.
Travis was over there, I don't know if he was helping him one day.
I saw his truck there.
Yeah, I know, yeah, I know, I don't, I don't know, to tell you the truth, I haven't talked to him about it, he may be helping him.
Has he still got guys at Judy's and Herman's, I think?
Yeah, yeah.
What else does he have going, does he have any?
Oh, he's doing one on the peninsula.
A new start?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then if, now that we got the sewer thing figured out, he'll be doing mine, and then him and my nephew are doing a spec house right beside us there.
Where's your new place gonna be?
On that river run.
Oh, yeah.
On Elcrick there.
Across the road there.
Yeah, yeah.
Across the river, yeah.
Yep.
Nice, that's a nice, nice view from up.
Yeah, yeah, I liked it, it, uh, the ones along the river, I thought were a little trendy, but we bought one off on the side there, kind of where that road goes up, just near the train.
Yeah.
There's, there're ten, and then we bought nine, and then he, he's gonna buy eight.
Right. There's an old trace road that drops down the hill?
Yep, yep.
That might be the Mullen Road.
Oh, really?
That might be one version of the Mullen Road.
I always, I always thought that Johnny Cochran did that.
I, I haven't, I gotta go look at it, I've been talking to a guy in Missoula who's really into the Mullen history.
The, the hiking trail thing is, where they're gonna do the hiking trail, is that what you're talking about?
I'm not sure what the hiking trail is.
Oh, well, through that one lot, I think maybe three, three or four, uh, so lot one is over there by friend is.
Okay, that's where it starts there.
Yeah, yeah, and then it works that way.
So are, on both sides of that road?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's outer, the outer ring, and then there's the inner.
Yep, and there's three or four on the.
Inner.
Uh, but there's a, a trail that, an old road that drops down the river there.
Yeah.
And they're gonna use that, they eliminated that one lot, and that's gonna be a, a common.
Common access?
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause this guy I was talking to um on the phone, haven't met him yet, but he sent me some maps, some uh different versions of maps showing the exact location of the Mullen Road dropping down to the riverbank.
Oh, really?
To cross over by hammers there.
Yeah.
There's one, there's one closer to the fishing access, which might be that one you're talking about, and then there's the one, another one closer to.
I always wondered where that come from, you know, and, and Johnny Cochran had a, a sawmill out there, oh, behind Coltus's old place there.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and then Coltus's, Dave Coltus actually ran it for a while, um, or John, John is dead.
Well, separate from, from Coltus's mill?
Yeah, it was Coltus's mill, Johnny Cochran built it to begin with.
Oh, that became Coltus's mill?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, get it up, get it up. Okay.
I always thought that he punched that down there when they were drawing water out of the river.
I need to go hike and look.
Yeah, I know, it's, it's pretty old, you know, I mean, it's been there.
I'm gonna just look at that, 'cause.
Been there a long time.
It's all that river gravel that's here.
Yeah, yeah.
So it wouldn't be that hard to.
That's kind of more rock up on that side than, it isn't really the, you know, like.
Big stuff.
Yeah, yeah, it isn't really like fourteen mile or, or anywhere, you know, where you got the skippers and stuff, this is, this is rock.
Big cobblestones like that, yeah, okay, yeah, they flush that.
I always wondered about that, 'cause, did you ever, that was probably before you were here, there used to be a school teacher there at St. Regis by the name of Jim Smith, and then he became superintendent there. And then he ended up being my insurance salesman after he was done being.
Really?
Yeah, superintendent, but he used to take the kids down there someplace at an old river crossing where there had been an Indian camp, and they used to dig for arrowhead, and they always come back with a ton of them. And I wonder if that's where it was, they always kept it kind of secret?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know if that's where it was at, I always kind of thought maybe it was out there by Sherman Oaks, you know, where it, where the water's a little shallower and, and.
Well, there's another, another place on state land, right before you get to the actual Mill Crick drainage, that drops off those steep down into the big bend of the river.
Yeah.
The party spot down in there.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sure there's a lot of trash and stuff, but I don't know if that's a modern road or if that's an old road going down that.
Yeah, I don't know either.
Huh. So yeah, we'll be hosting, Mineral County will be hosting the annual Mullen Conference in September in St. Regis. Since we didn't have it last year at all, this year with the unknowns, we didn't schedule it for May. So we're gonna go out on a limb and schedule it for September, hoping things hold steady with public health. And we'll have a weekend Mullen Road conference for people from all over the Northwest, or the inland Northwest basically. Like we've hosted most of them in the past, but, well, the first ten, fifteen years, Mineral County have all the conferences. First one was eighty-nine, I think, in conjunction with the Centennial and the rededication of the Mullen statue and all that. Uh, that's kind of what we kicked, we have, we have, having an annual Mullen, Mullen Road conference. So, um, since then, we've had Missoula, Helena, Fort Benton on the other end, um. Let's see, Spokane. Cheney, Washington, Kellogg, we have one in Kellogg, and so we sprinkle them around, because that's kind of our following, is that whole region. You know, the, the road is six hundred and twenty-four miles long from Fort Benton to Fort Walla Walla, so it takes out a big area. So we'll have that in September at St. Regis, guest speakers, little field trips, yeah, social time, meals together, very, you know, it'll be fun. Hopefully we're not all smoked out or anything like that.
Yeah.
We're gonna have a mild sun.
So, yeah, I need to go hike that hill, that whole side, that whole hillside.
Yeah.
Check it out.
Yeah.
I'll be there, in my spare time. But now, I think I'm gonna dash over to Arstad's and take a peek at their auction.
Was that worth that, huh?
Yeah.
It's tomorrow.
Yeah, I, I heard that there was an auction, but I wasn't sure.
The list that long in the local paper.
Oh, Mary was telling me they got sixteen tractors in that way, so.
Oh, at least, yeah, there's, yeah.
They got something for everybody. And we've all been locked up for a year.
And a lot of stuff for nobody.
Yeah. Yes, I just told Eddie, go visit it, don't bring it home.
He will be tempted, 'cause there's some neat old antiquey type stuff, you know, but uh, uh, I'm just gonna pop in and visit, say hi to Tony and, and Joan, and. Just kind of, I'm just curious to see how it laid out. What they were able to do, I don't know if that whole thing about Ponderosa Lane, remember that? Uh, there was a boundary dispute with Arstad's.
Oh, yeah.
Jason Alexander and his crew, and so um, Jason McCleese and Joan put their heads together, and then with some other landowners, I guess further west, there's a Ponderosa Lane. That they were able to tie into Arstad's property, 'cause Arstad's goes way down to the southwest corner behind Maxwell's place. Rivera's old place, right, and their well is on, is actually down in that southwest corner, it's at the low point of the property, and that's why they, they have to pump water a long ways up to the property, you know. And he's got a little field, he used to, he used to till a little field down there just for fun, 'cause Everett was such a farmer at heart, he just kept a couple acres tilled up in front of the house there. Couple times a year, and then he had this other little field down below, just 'cause he liked to run tractors. Yeah, so they, anyway, they negotiated permission to extend the road from the Arstad property further west, tie in to Ponderosa Lane or whatever it's called, Carolina Mullen Road. So it'll be a one-way loop for traffic, because the driveway's only one lane wide going up to their house, it's a steep one-lane driveway, and there's not a whole lot of, well, they're gonna have to make room for parking. As you can imagine, all these people show up, they're great big pickups and trailers, looking for treasures to haul home. I, I don't know how they're gonna accommodate that with parking, but I wanna go snoop it out, they'll be able to drive up that way, get parked somehow, drive out the other way.
How does that start?
Uh, preview, preview today is twelve to four, I think, and preview tomorrow at eight, and then start at ten. I just hope they got parking in the houses for enough people, uh, I think Kevin Hill's figured all that out. Then I'm gonna go home and do some of my own projects, yay!
Yeah, we can be outside now, maybe.
Yeah.
Thanks for taking interest and coming on down.